Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Nine to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, January 26, 2015, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is Mayor's public announcements and proclamations. It's Black History Month in February 2015. The African-American Achievement Awards will be at Evanston Township High School on the 27th. Does anyone know, I think, seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock, yes.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes. And there will be an Evanston Town Hall meeting on Saturday, January 31st, from 1:00 to 3:00, at the Levy Senior Center. And Chief Eddington and I will be panelists, along with Vernon Clark, Lisa Hayden, Jonathan Thomas. And it's organized and sponsored by Reverend Michael James, who's the founder of Hope. Then I have an excellent announcement. The City of Evanston won the U.S. Conference of Mayors 2014 Summer Youth Jobs Challenge. We got first place for small cities. And so I'm going to pass the award around. It's heavy, I warn you guys. Small, but it's heavy. The reason that we won is thanks to an incredible staff. We used to have 160 jobs for kids in 2012, and 500 kids applying. In 2014, we had 500 jobs for kids and 600 kids applying. So we improved incredibly. And when I heard the other cities and their scores in Washington, D.C., at the U.S. Mayor's Conference, I was incredibly proud and in awe of what our staff did. So I'd like to thank all the businesses that hired our youth, as well as all the city departments that did. And we're gone from a target of 500 jobs, which we made, to staff now wants to set the target at 1,000 jobs. So we're going to need a lot of help from the community. Mr. McCray, would you like to come up and tell us when the job fair will be? And what people might do if they want to hire our youth? And I would like to put in a plug. I interviewed for the Health Department one year, and we have fabulous kids who want these jobs. So please, everybody, if you can possibly hire a young person in the summer, please do it. Take it away, Mr. McCray.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, City Manager and City Clerk, Joe McCray, Director of Parks and Community Services and Deputy City Manager. Yes, we are extremely happy with the receipt of the award. Special thanks to this Mayor and City Council for your continued support of our efforts. They are yielding fabulous results. Want to talk a little bit, well, and also special thanks to Kevin Brown and Portia Davis, who are the engine that makes this whole program go. Want to make one big plug, which is that on Saturday, March 28th, at the high school from 8:00 until 1:00, will be this year's job fair. And so we hope that everyone will come out and support. We are working with our private sector partners to try to get more jobs for kids. That is accurate. And we can always use volunteers. We'll send more information out. The application will be put on the website for the kids to start applying the second week of February. So we're looking forward to another good year. Hopefully, we will match or exceed last year's expectations. And we do have lofty goals. So I don't know if we'll make 1,000, but we're absolutely going to try.
Well, we may not make 1,000 this year, but we will sooner or later. And I'd like to close with one story about, that I ended my speech at the U.S. Mayor's Conference with this story. One young man who had been shot in a gang altercation had a summer job with us. And at the end of the summer, he said that he needed to keep working because he needed to be able to tell his friends that he couldn't hang out with them, that he had to go to work. So we hired him for a full-time job. And he's been working for us, and now he hangs out with the people from Public Works instead of with people from the gangs. And he's making straight A's. And he's in an alternative school, and they've never had so many phone calls from Public Works demanding to know what assistance they're giving him and to be sure that he's doing what he's supposed to do. So it's been a tremendous success story in many ways.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your continued support.
Thank you. That concludes my announcements. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor, members of the council. We're here to talk to you about a new endeavor we find ourselves in. Catherine Hurley, our Sustainability Manager is here. You might recall, members of the council, over the last few years, you getting emails from people wondering why we aren't participating in the Earth Hour program. And that would be to turn off the city lights for one hour on Earth Day. Well, we've gone way past that now. And Catherine is here to tell you about the, our latest endeavor, working with the World Wildlife Fund.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager Bauckowitz and City Clerk Green. Catherine Hurley, Sustainability Manager. So the City of Evanston is pleased to announce that we have been selected as one of the top three finalists in all of the United States for the World Wildlife Fund's Earth Hour City Challenge. So there are two, yay! There are two, it's really exciting. There are two components to this. The first is the Earth Hour Capitals, which is a jury selection. So this is a combination of national and international experts, as well as members of Accenture Consulting, who are reviewing all of the climate action plans and implementation progress that have been submitted by all of the cities around the world. And in the United States, there were 40 cities that competed in the first round, and Evanston was selected as one of three top cities in the U.S. based on our achievements and accomplishments and our efforts to fight climate change. So there's going to continue to have that information reviewed, and there will be a U.S. Earth Hour Capital. So we're going to be completing, competing with Cleveland and Seattle. And by the end of March, there will be a U.S. Earth Hour Capital selected. And then whatever city is selected, hopefully Evanston, we will hopefully then be going on to compete internationally with the top capital in 14 other countries to see who is going to be the global Earth Hour Challenge winner. So that's the juried Earth Hour selection, and that's based on our past accomplishments. And then on the right-hand side, there's the second challenge, which is also exciting, the We Love Cities Challenge part. And that's where people in the community and across the country and across the world have the opportunity to vote for their favorite sustainable city. So this map shows you all of the countries that are represented. Most countries have three Earth Hour finalists that are competing for the capital in the jury selection. But then all of these countries have cities that are competing in the We Love Cities contest. So there are, right now, 47 cities that are all competing. You can see the box showing that Cleveland, Evanston, and Seattle are competing from the United States. And so as a result of eight weeks of voting and engagement online, there will then be one overall We Love Cities Challenge winner. And the international challenge winner will receive the We Love Cities Award on April 9th in Seoul, South Korea, in conjunction with the, a big Sustainability World Congress put on by Italy. So this is a little bit showing you how you can participate. Our top banner, you're going to start seeing this on all sorts of city websites, social media, newsletter, email footers, all sorts of different ways that we're sending out information. You can vote today and every day. Everyone is allowed to vote at least one time per method, every day until March 27th. And the landscape, you might notice, represents landmarks from all the cities that are competing. So Evanston is the lighthouse, so it's directly in the middle. It's not exactly our lighthouse, but lighthouse selected to represent Evanston. And in the upper right-hand corner is the logo for We Love Evanston, which is with the lighthouse. So three ways that people can participate. You can vote and share your ideas on how Evanston can be even more sustainable and vote for We Love Evanston, visiting weloveevanston.org. People can also follow and tweet @greenevanston, which is a sustainability hashtag, sustainability Twitter handle with the hashtag #WeLoveEvanston. And then there's also the opportunity to do photos and videos on Instagram. So this contest, as you can see, is social media-based. However, people in Evanston can go to any of our facilities that have public computers. We'll have little cards at the library, at the Levy Senior Center, so people can come to any of the public access computers and vote for Evanston as well. So in terms of getting, being able to participate, voting today and every day, it is anyone who loves Evanston. You can live here, you can work here, or you could have known someone who has lived here or worked here. Anyone from anywhere in the whole world that loves Evanston can vote for us. So people can be voting every day for the competition. We also are encouraging people to spread the word. Staff will be working with community partners and businesses and making sure to get the word out so that people know about the contest and can also, alumni groups and, you know, people that came here for summer once, anyone that has any affinity can vote for us. And then to make it even easier to update people's social media and website information, we'll have the logos, We Love Evanston, and the little banner available for download on cityofevanston.org/d sustainability. So if you want to have that little logo all coordinated on your social media, we will have that for download as well. So as the City Manager said, it's really exciting. We've, for the entire time they've done this contest, we have submitted our information, and it's evolved over time. And now is a great time for Evanston to be recognized for achieving our initial climate action goal, setting a new climate action goal in our livability plan, and for all the wonderful work that we've already done. And now we can encourage the community to help vote with us. So now until March 27th, hopefully, we will have good news about being the winner. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
I hope so, too. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. But for someone who can barely remember to, you know, drink enough vitamin D every day, I wonder if there's a way to sign up for a text alert to remind me to vote every day?
Great idea. We're going to be, yep, using all sorts of our tools.
That's a great idea. We can do that.
Yep, definitely.
That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Ms. Hurley, how many cities initially applied?
So in the United States, there were 40 that then we were chosen for three. And globally, I think 80 or 90 different cities around the globe participated in that first, that first phase. And now there's about 47 that are kind of up to the cut. And I will say, in all transparency, there was lots of information that had to be submitted. But because we already do so much reporting on all of our work, it was really easy for us. But some communities that would just be burdensome even to apply to be considered, that was one of our strengths in our application.
Alderman Wynn.
Hi, Catherine. Have we been in contact with ETHS's Green Team on this?
So right now is the, exactly the time we're going to be doing all the outreach. We wanted to wait until the website is live. You can actually go to weloveevanston.org right now, and it takes you right to the voting page. So ETHS, Northwestern, all of our big employers, all of our business districts, really, we're going to be having some signage put in community centers. And hopefully, throughout the eight weeks, people will start to see it. Luckily, it's long enough where we have the opportunity to sort of build momentum over time. So we'll be definitely reaching out to them and many others.
Okay, good.
Alderman Fisk.
I'm sorry, Alderman Wynn, were you done?
I just said, I know the president. Yeah, great.
Actually, I love the logo. We should replace our city logo with it, I think.
And we didn't do that logo. This is all from the World Wildlife.
Right. We did submit pictures of three landmarks of Evanston, and then they looked at those landmarks and picked something that made sense. And based on all of them, ours really is lovely.
We may not see the Evanston Lighthouse next to the Eiffel Tower again in a graphic anytime soon. So thank you, Catherine, for all your hard work.
Thank you.
And lastly, Madam Mayor, members of the council, sort of an update and a question for the council, looking at the month of February. Several items that we're hoping to accomplish during February. One is to have a longer discussion regarding Robert Crown. We would, we had hoped to do that at the third meeting in February on the 16th. Unfortunately, or fortunately for the mayor, she's going to be out of town. So we can't do that. So rather than have a special meeting, what we would like to do is on the 20, not have the meeting at all on the 16th. And then on the 23rd, kind of have an alternate schedule for the council. So we think that will be largely a light agenda otherwise, but that if we could change the format so that we start with AMPW at 6:00, have P&amp;D follow immediately and not wait till 7:15, and then have the council follow immediately after that. We think with the items that we're looking at, that we can get through the two committees pretty quickly. And so that rather than having a special meeting, rather than having the meeting on the 16th, we'd roll it all onto the 23rd. So if that meets with everyone's, it'll be a longer evening, but we think we can do it in an efficient manner, rather than have you come back two additional times during the month of February. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Great. And then lastly, on another February note, the Rules Committee has been canceled for February 2nd. So the council's rules were changed in last fall. So Human Services will start at 6:00, not at 7:30. So if you could just make a note that Human Services will start at 6:00 on February 2nd, there'll be no Rules Committee. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, City Manager. I forgot to say one thing. When I was at the U.S. Mayor's Conference, I was at the White House at a breakout session on climate change. And the moderator was Rohan Patel of Evanston. And then when I walked out to go to the next breakout session, the young lady who showed us where to go, which was good because I'd gotten lost in there, was also from Evanston. I didn't get her name because I was busy following her directions. So I think we're taking over. City Clerk, do you have announcements? Communications for us.
Yes, Madam Mayor. For those who've been wondering about the School Board elections, there will be elections here at the Civic Center, starting the 23rd of March through April 7th. We will be in, hopefully, in Room 2200, as we were last time. The times have not been set up yet, but they'll, I'm pretty sure they'll be the same times we had it last time. Open on Saturdays and Sundays as well, because we have grown, and we are one of the ones who have now been required to be on Sunday, Saturdays and Sundays as well. So starting 23rd of March through the 7th of April is early voting. And then the election day is April the 7th.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Could you remind us, City Clerk, when the last day to register to vote is?
Yes, I'd get a, I forgot, I forgot to bring my paper with me. But it's the, if we start the 23rd, I think the last day to register and vote would be, April 3rd, I think. But I'll make sure.
But just to regularly, regular registration would be like 30 days?
30 days before election.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. I'm going to call the first four names. You each have three minutes, and please give us your name. George Rieger, Lauren Barsky, Tom Sheridan, and Alex Anam.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm very grateful for this opportunity to address you about the future of Penny Park. My name is George Rieger. I've lived in Evanston for over 40 years, and I've lived on the block where Penny Park is located since 1980, almost 35 years. I'm a, I was a builder. I'm a home inspector now, and I'm also a local Evanston landlord. And I was involved in the planning and the building of this park. And it really took place over about a year and a half when it was built in 1990. You know, I'm here with this group, and, you know, with your permission, I thought I would go first because I could provide some context and history about the park and really the neighborhood. And it might take a little bit more than three minutes. That's okay. The rest of the people are going to speak, I promise, and I've committed to staying at three minutes. I'll do my best.
A little.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Everyone goes over, just.
Okay, okay, okay.
Just don't tell anyone.
Okay. Turn off your watches. So I moved into the middle of the block in 1980. At the time, on the lot where the park now sits, was a Lutheran Elementary School, which had just closed down. And, excuse me. I know you. Thank you. Glad to see you here. It had, it had just closed down the previous spring, and the next year it was torn down. This is sort of an empty, kind of ruggly lot, but it really got a lot of use and a lot of play from the kids in the neighborhood. And this was before leash laws, so kids, dogs kind of ran loose there, but it was okay. It was a wild spot, and it got a lot of use. In the, some point in the 80s, mid to late 80s, the city bought this piece of property, and they proposed putting in a fire station. And so when I moved in the neighborhood, I would say it was a neighborhood in transition. And I knew the people on my block, but I, I didn't really know a lot of the people in the surrounding area. But a community, we started to grow because we had concerns about the fire station. We think fire station, obviously, is a good thing, and we support it, but we felt it was such a residential neighborhood, maybe this wasn't a good fit. So we created a group, and we went to the city, and we said, you know, we don't want a fire station here. Okay? And they said, well, tell us what you do want. So we had a meeting, and we suggested a park. We'd like a park. So I believe we went to Parks and Recreation. They did a study of the neighborhood. And they came back to us and said, you know what? That's a good idea. This area is really underserved by parks and playgrounds. We think a park is just great. So we started to found a group, and we started to get to know our neighbors, and we really got some energy in the community. And one of our members, Mike Mullenair, was an architect who lived further north on National. He suggested Leathers designers, I'm so sorry about that, Leathers designers in Ithaca, New York, who do the thing, do, they build Penny Park, you know, wooden structures, that's a community build. And the city was terrific. And I think we started, at this point, we started working with Parks and Recreation. They really supported us. They trusted us. They gave us oversight, but they really kind of turned it over to us to do. So, you know, we worked with Leathers on the design. And we raised all the funds, got donated materials, everything. We supplied all the labor. And I think at the, the final count, and it was just a crazy five and a half days when we built that, was 2,800 people worked in that park. I mean, it was, it was just such, such a great event. We had all the local, all the news stations from Chicago came out and covered it. It really galvanized the community and really, I think, really created this community and these connections, and really, a really a sense of community in the neighborhood. You know, I think, you know, now it's come up for rebuild. You know, as a home inspector, there's another park in Indian Boundary, was built a year before, and I went down there and took a look at it, and it's much worse condition than our park. So this is really, I really have to thank Parks and Recreation for maintaining it so well. Does it need to be rebuilt right now? No. But in a few years, yeah, and I think now that it's just moving, this is a good time to address this situation. I really believe this is a historic park because of what it is and how the children and the community respond to it. It's really at the heart of our community. You know, if you look at the city of Chicago, they name their neighborhoods. You know, Wicker Park, Humboldt Park, Edgewater, Lincoln Park. And in fact, I went on, I wanted to get Alderman Braithwaite's telephone number, so I went on the website, and he has a little biography there, and he says, I was, you know, born and raised in the Second Ward, and I now live in the Penny Park neighborhood, which I think is great. And so I think if this neighborhood was to have a name, it would be called Penny Park. And I think the current, the plans are they are now, it kind of happened backwards from how we originally did it, this redesign. And I don't think anybody is happy with it. And so, you know, this is a city, I mean, it's a city that supports development, which is important, but I think it also takes pride in its historic, historic architecture. And, you know, if someone's going to work on something that's historic, they are either, it's either expected or it's required that they, they stay true to the original design. And I think those considerations should be taken here.
I do need you to wrap up.
Okay. I'm ready to wrap up. So given that we had such a successful partnership with the city when we built this park, I would like to have this process returned back to the neighborhood so we can again partner with the city and design this park that suits the needs of the neighbors and really maintains the, the spirit and the character and the design elements of the current park. Again, we're open to innovation improvement. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Barsky, and I'm responsible for the website preservepennypark.com. I want to start by thanking the city for holding the community-wide meeting about the future of Penny Park on December 11th. Thanks in particular to Alderman Braithwaite and Parks and Recctor Joe McCray and other city staff for a really commendable job running the meeting and providing the community with information and opportunity for input. Thanks also to council members Wilson and Tindham for attending, and to Council Member Wynn for your thoughtful and visible engagement in the process of determining the future of Penny Park. I think we can all agree that many people deeply care about the future of Penny Park. We also all agree that the park should be brought into compliance with current safety and accessibility requirements. No one is suggesting otherwise. Opinions differ, however, on how best to accomplish this. The current city plan accomplished this by entirely demolishing the existing play structure and replacing it with a very differently designed structure made of plastic composite. I believe that we, as a community, can do better than this. And I encourage you to consider other options. Options such as rehabbing the park or rebuilding the play structure in largely the same design, but in accordance with current safety and ADA requirements. Cities all across the country are employing creative ways such as these to preserve the spirit and design of their aging wooden, leathers-built play structures. Many of them are hiring the playground company Play By Design to help. Play By Design is where the original Leathers project manager for Penny Park actually now works, along with several other former Leathers employees. I have information here for you, Mayor, on Play By Design, which I previously emailed to each council member. I would also like to present to you, Mayor Tisdale, and council members, voices from the community that I hope you will keep in mind tonight and going forward. First, I have a petition of more than 2,300 signatures from all over the world, though primarily from current Evanston residents, in support of preserving the unique design of the park. I encourage you to read through the names and the comments from your colleagues, your neighbors, and perhaps most importantly, your constituents. I am also very honored to present you with a collection of letters in support of preserving the park from fifth-grade students in the TUI Spanish-English immersion program at Dawes Elementary. These students reached out to me through their teacher because they care so much about what happens to the park. I and others have invested a tremendous amount of time, resources, and energy in raising awareness about the city's current plan for the park. I ask you tonight to reconsider that plan. I ask you tonight to reconsider that plan, to take some steps back and begin again by following the customary process in place in Evanston for addressing aging city parks. That was not followed here.
Lauren, I do need you to wrap up.
Okay. I further invite you to open a competitive bid for the park design and management process going forward, which is also standard of practice and which also was not done here. I commit and promise to you that if we can get this process moving ahead on this track, you have a group, a big group, of dedicated, passionate people with time, resources, and experience willing to partner with you moving forward. Let's do this better and let's do this together. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Sheridan. I've lived in the Penny Park neighborhood for over thirty years and the original Penny Park project was a wonderful community effort and has contributed hugely to the, the great spirit of the neighborhood, even to this day. Often when I talk to people in Evanston about Penny Park, I get the reaction, I love Penny Park. How many other places or things in our community would you get such a strong sentiment for? After twenty-three years, the park has stood the test of time. My kids and their friends used Penny Park extensively and loved it. I walk by the park two or three times a day and it is always busy and full of activity. Even in the winter, kids are playing there and this is the way it has been. In summary, Penny Park is a huge success. I do not accept the opinion that the park is unsafe and not suitable for today's children. I think we need a more objective review of the park infrastructure. The existing park can be preserved and improvements can be implemented. Raising the existing park seems very extreme. There's also the issue of cost. Repairs rather than a total design would be much less costly. The proposed design 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 design
Good evening. My name is Alex Anon and I'm, I'm the owner of the bicycle shop that is across the street from the park, which is lovely to look out the window and see it every day. It's the best part of my day. The Penny Park structure was built by many hands with good intentions. We are still witnessing the impact of something made with a great and noble purpose. The park was truly built for children of all ages with materials and methods that are easy to understand and to love. A park made from wood, one of the more sustainable building materials and the most beautiful. The park is used by many children with their caretakers, remembered by many more, and used heavily all year round for a wide range of activities, from birthday parties, celebrations, to sport games, including snow sports, of course, to remotely controlling miniature supercharged cars. I have even seen small rockets being deployed from its field. I'm not going to tell you who did it. I understand its current limitations, for instance, ADA and other safety guidelines, but the plays flourishes with humans and I see this every day, almost. Cannines, felines, birds, and other less noteworthy fauna. I have yet, and I have yet to hear or to see firsthand a good reason for the structure to be replaced. As someone who has devoted more than a decade to the study and the practice of architecture, I believe that the structure could be repaired and modified to accommodate all children's play, including children with disabilities. We have to wake up to the notion that new is better than old. We buy into efficiencies and maintenance costs and we end up with less quality and less reason to be proud of our parks in this case. One council member compared the existing park with a cellphone during a meeting I attended at the Joseph E. Hill Education Center. No one's walking around with a twenty-year-old phone, right? Well, a park is not a phone and a park has got a much better plan. There's no comparisons, hands down. You don't need to charge it, just bring your children, you get good coverage thanks to the trees, no contracts, no early termination fee. I don't believe anyone who took part in the building of, of this park, and I understand that there were more than those like George building with hammers, there were a lot of individuals and, and who also physically pushed the idea that came before the, the first hammer swung. The people involved were not thinking about obsolescence and I say that with confidence. They were building for the future.
I need you to wrap up, sorry.
Sometimes there's a reason why we preserve history and we show our respect because we understand the efforts that created something good. Penny Park, given twenty years later, is too good to be discarded. It will also, it will also be a good lesson to teach our children. We need to be reminded of that sometimes. And so I humbly suggest that we use our money to fix something that is beyond repairs and beyond support. That should be the criteria. Penny Park is not beyond repairs and certainly not beyond support. Penny Park should be preserved and I suggest you could use a fraction of those funds for improvements to be continued, for a good use of a great park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Katie Young, Yulabiss, Junad Risky, and Chris, I'm sorry, Gigerow, if I massacre Just pull it, good job.
Hi. At the end of the speech, I will present my petition to Mayor Tisdale. Good evening. My name is Katie Young and I live at 2607 Colfax Street and attend fifth grade at Lincolnwood Elementary School. Penny Park has always been my favorite park. It's come to my attention that the city of Evanston is going to demolish this park. So many people love and cherish this park. For instance, on Saturday, when I played at Penny Park, my dad and I talked with a woman who likes Penny Park because it's a unique park and her son expresses her imagination more in this park than others. She said he also gets more exercise in Penny Park. So you see, Penny Park has such great qualities that people continue to enjoy, so it shouldn't be torn down. Many people have such great memories at this park that they will never forget. I started a petition last week to help save Penny Park. People who signed my petition wanted to upgrade and improve the park, but not demolish it and lose its special character. I brought my petition to school and to soccer practice. When I told my soccer teammates about the demolishing of Penny Park, they were shocked. Hundred percent of the people I talked with and explained the situation signed my petition. One of my friends, Madison, was very upset. This is exactly what she said. What? Penny Park is like the place where I grew up. They can't demolish it. Give me that pen. I am so signing your petition. Like Madison, Penny Park is a place where I grew up. I have had so many great memories there. What makes Penny Park so special and unique is its playground equipment. At Penny Park, you can find a safe, moving staircase, a tire ladder that moves, that leads into a tire swing, up and down monkey bars, and it's great hide-and-seek places. You can't find these in any other park in Evanston. You don't have to demolish Penny Park. You can change it, update it, make it better. So please, keep this park up for the sake of me and the sake of others who love this park. Thank you for your consideration. I really hope that my speech makes a difference.
Thank you very much.
My name is Yulabiss. I'm here as the mother of a five-year-old who plays in Penny Park almost every day. When it's snowing, when it's raining, when it's muddy, when it's incredibly hot outside, we're, we're out there. And the process that George was talking about, the first speaker, the process that happened around building this park, I, I see the potential for something like that to happen again around the renovation of Penny Park. And I already feel that exciting community energy around the group that's committed to preserving the aspects of Penny Park that we find most essential and valuable. I've only lived in Evanston for a year. I moved here from Rogers Park. And, and meeting other people who are committed to preserving Penny Park has been really thrilling and exciting to me and, and has also been a way to connect me to the history of the neighborhood. And so, meeting George and meeting Alex, who runs the bike shop and who fixed my bike a couple of weeks ago, this is, I think that the, the kind of grassroots community organizing that's going on around this park is really vital to the neighborhood and, and really energizing to us. And, and I'm really grateful to the, the city for hearing us and for, for thinking about our concerns. And I think that what this group has to offer is very valuable and shouldn't be overlooked. And what I feel like I have to offer is many, many hours spent in the park observing how children play there. Even before I moved to Evanston a year ago, I used to ride my bike up here from Penny Park with, I mean, from Rogers Park with my son. So I've got, I've logged a lot of hours watching how the park is used. And my biggest concern about the proposed plan is that the way the park is used most often right now is that children run from the east end of the play structure to the west end of the play structure. They circle through all the little routes in there and then they run back again. And either they're running for fun or they're being chased or they're chasing someone, but they run through and through again and through again and they're usually screeching while they do it with glee and they run back and forth and then eventually they come out one of the ends covered in sweat and panting and with a huge smile on their faces. And, and I don't see this kind of play happening at any other park in Evanston. And I don't see kids getting that kind of exercise anywhere else in any other park. I also don't see kids playing at any other park in the snow or in the rain. And it's always exciting to me when I go out there in a cold rain and there's six other kids playing in Penny Park. And my biggest concern over the, the new plan is that the, the new structure doesn't allow for that long winding path from one end to another, that great arc of running. And, and part of that is because it's being divided into two play structures for two different age groups. And for me, that's the biggest concern, but I hear the other concerns that are coming up.
I do need you to wrap up.
Sure. So that's the one thing that I hope can be preserved about the park is the way children play in it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Chris Gigerow and I've lived around the corner from Penny Park for about nine years. I have a daughter at Dewey, who's in fifth grade now, and I spent, she spent countless hours at Penny and I spent many of those with her. She also went to Cherry for preschool and so I've spent many hours with the other Cherry kids at Penny. I'm also a real estate agent and I sell homes in that neighborhood where I live and I also help people who are moving out of the city up into the North Shore and into Evanston in particular. And so I spend a good deal of my time talking to people about places they want to move and I hear what people value about Evanston as a community. And the things that they value about it are that it's not, it's not your normal suburb, right? People don't think of Evanston as suburban. People think of Evanston as this place that has many of the qualities of a city and that has a history to it, a rich history, a history that's written into its architecture and its city and its planning, a history of diversity and, and integration that's particularly rich within that area, the Dewey Conference area. Those are all qualities that Penny Park symbolizes. Penny Park is not your average park. It's a different park. It's a park that has a history to it. It's, to my mind, a historically significant structure, right? We see all these historically significant structures that are private houses, you know, created by the wealth or the good fortune of an individual. This is a historical structure that was created by a community and that therefore has even more historical and architectural value to it, it seems to me. Just one last thing. George noticed, noted how when the original build of the park, this was a community that was in transition. This is still a community that's in transition. There's, you just have to, particularly the west part of it, Florence, Dewey, Darrell, you just have to drive down those streets and see the amount of rehabbing that has gone on there in the last few years. And transition, you know, cuts both ways. It's great to see rundown houses being rehabbed and spruced up, but it's also, many of those houses are two flats, they're multi-units that have been converted into single families. And what that is, what that means is a reduction of, you know, affordable rental housing units in that community. So it is, it's a community that's in flux and in change. And I think the kind of community cohesion that was brought, that happened around the original build of the park, there's a real opportunity for that to happen again around this rehab of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm not really been involved in this Penny Park issue, but my children use Penny Park and I've lived here thirty years. It appears to me that once again, we have an issue where residents' values are being attacked, you know, by the city doing something that, that probably isn't of, you know, basic our money being used in a way that's probably not very good. And I believe in listening to these people, most of them have the experience and knowledge and ability in what they're saying about the park. I haven't been there and looked at it as an architect and engineer, but looking at many of the things that have happened here, I suspect they're correct, quite correct. So I, I think a lot of people value these things, just like Harley Clark. People value these buildings and things and they don't want these things destroyed and turns into hotels or other things that have no value to us as citizens. And the same with our live branch libraries and many things here that are, seem to be in question. But my, as, as most people know, my issue's long been the budget and, and not too many people quite have that, my, some of my concerns. Tonight, we have the issue with the water tank and I, as I've been saying, I'm fine with what I hear now with this water tank because the Northwest Water Commission is going to be paying the lion's share of this thing. But the real issue is still the operation of the water department, what it's doing, how it's running. And I keep on asking that a consultant come in and look at this and tell us what's going on there. And the city seems to not be too interested in dealing with this. But we pay for all kinds of things here, from silly things, we love Evanston, to all kinds of things with our tax dollars. We even did part of the water study to turn a park and set a, set a tank in a park, which probably was fifteen thousand dollars in the water study we spent studying. We were going to put a tank in the middle of Lee Park, basically a ten or fifteen-foot high structure, taking one and a half, quarter acres of the park. We were studying that as one of the options with our tax dollars. So in some ways, we have no respect for our assets, our parks, so it is an interesting thing here that anyone would even think of wasting our money and time looking at something like that. So as I'm going to close on this, I'm fine with what you're doing with this tank, but I make sure Northwestern pays if you move this tank or do anything, is very important to me. And as I said, dealing with the study, creating a study so we know where this money's going, I think is rather important because there will be a ten percent water bill increase just because we're not going to have an increase that was asked for. So you'll be dealing with that again next year. So you ought to be, you'll have to be answering some questions again. Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. Did you have an announcement?
Yes. In regards to the voting, the last day to register to vote is March tenth. The last day to register to vote is March tenth and the last day for early voting is April fourth. And all that, and you can register with the clerk's office here in the Civic Center, room twelve hundred, up until the tenth of March. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. The next four speakers are Eric Passat, Virginia Mann, Martha Moser, and Margaret Tar. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening. And my name is Eric Pass and I own an apartment rental agency at Custer and Main. We're very close to there. And as you know, I'm not a resident of that area. I am a resident near Dempster and Ridge. And we park our cars on the street multiple times during the day. And I move my car, park it again, mostly on Washington. It's two-hour parking. And now, there's a new law that goes into effect, or has gone into effect, that if you park on either side of the street more than two hours, you're ticketed. Okay? So, I've been ticketed numerous times and so have all my employees. And I, it doesn't really matter what business I do in Evanston, but I do help people find apartments in Evanston, bring a lot of people into the Evanston for over 20 years. I've been at this location about seven years. And I've gone to the city, asked them for residential stickers, unable to get one naturally because I'm not a resident. But we do, so where do we park as business owners? We could park three blocks away, but, you know, I go in and out of my office numerous times. And I guess I just think it's, I don't want to say unfair because I understand that if you're a resident, I'm a resident near Dempster and Ridge, I would have, be opposed to a whole bunch of people parking that area who are commuters, take the train or not. But we're helping people in Evanston, not just my business, but other businesses also. So, I talked to Mr. Voss and unfortunately, I believe he's ill. And so, he proposed that we take the, he understood my concerns and he proposed we take the parking lot that's with, I think, Goods of Evanston. And it's very underutilized. I mean, it's metered parking, I think about 30 spaces. I can't, I'm there, I'd say, six days a week, 10 hours a day. I don't see many people using that parking lot at any time, maybe five, six people. Why couldn't some of the businesses rent parking from there on a monthly basis? Eight would bring revenue to, you know, to our whole city as a whole and it would help people out like me who get parking tickets like crazy. And I just don't think it's fair to people like us. We pay our taxes, I pay my taxes. And even if I wasn't a resident, but I had a business in Evanston, it's just not fair to people like us. You want businesses to open up in Evanston, but where do we park? There is nowhere. You know, you can say I can park in a parking lot three blocks away, but that's pretty far if I had to go in and out of a lot. So, I guess I'd just like some help on that. I've, you know, I don't know who to go to for that.
The city manager is going to respond.
Yeah. Johanna Niden, our Economic Development Manager, is sitting right behind you. So, I'm going to ask Johanna to go out with you and chat some more and perhaps we can work on that. There's a special services area that's being formed there. This is a good time to have these kind of conversations. So, Johanna's on top of all that and she'd be happy to talk with you.
I appreciate the opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody left something here.
Oh, I think I'm supposed to get that.
Virginia Mann, 3004 Normandy Place. Last year, I worked with many others in Evanston to make changes to improve shelter care for homeless and lost animals in our city. At that time, we all looked at numerous options for improving shelter care management here in Evanston. It became clear to many of us that the best solution would be to have a professionally managed shelter run by experienced shelter professionals who could best serve the interest of Evanston, pets, and the people who love them. So, I was appalled to learn last week, when the RFP went out, that we sent an RFP out for shelter management that calls for any organization that comes in here to absorb all of the cost for shelter care other than the expense related to the building. No responsible, well-run, not-for-profit organization is going to do that. They can't afford to, nor should they be asked to. I would expect that we will have zero responses to that RFP, not because organizations aren't interested in working with us, not because they can't come in here and provide excellent shelter care for homeless or lost pets in Evanston, but because they cannot afford to take on a financial burden that has always been the city of Evanston's and should continue to be the city of Evanston's. I don't know if somebody's trying to cut the budget for shelter care and reallocate those funds to some other cause. If so, let's be transparent about it. This is totally inappropriate, unfair, and not in the best interest of the people of Evanston or the animals that they love. We deserve to have a shelter that is well-run, that is professionally managed, that brings to the city things that we have been lacking for decades, things like low-cost spay neuter, microchipping, low-cost injections, behavioral guidance for animals that may need additional training or care, appropriate matching of animals to people who want to adopt them, work with other agencies, whether big ones in other parts of the region or smaller ones, to find the appropriate home for homeless pets. Let's quit going down the wrong path here and instead do the right thing, seek out a partner with us to provide appropriate care for our animals, somebody who is a professional at this, who has experience at this, who knows how to do this. And let's provide the funding that, quite frankly, has already been budgeted for them to do so. And if not, I hope that we will at least be transparent about why we are not doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Martha Moser. I live at 929 Washington Street. I wish I had an uplifting message for you, like Parks and Recreation, but I'm a broken record, so I'm going to drone on about my issue. The spinning studio at 904 Sherman Avenue, known as RevX, formerly known as Revolution Spin, has been a public noise nuisance for more than three years since the opening in October of 2011. As of last July, when I checked, there were 57 police incident reports related to the business, and I know there have been at least 10 more complaints since then, even one this morning. The local citizens impacted by the noise have tried to get the RevX owner, Jason Bressler, and the landlord, Cass Management, and the city of Evanston to do something to mitigate the pervasive invasion of loud music and amplified shouting, which they must endure. On October 27, 2014, a petition requesting that RevX be soundproofed was submitted to the city council by Annette Brazier-Rosier, a resident who had once lived across the street from RevX. The petition was turned over to the city manager but has somehow got lost. Fortunately, a copy of the petition had been made and is presented here again. I'm speaking for Ms. Rosier, who couldn't be here this evening. The petition has the signatures of 55 apartment dwellers, homeowners, business owners, and other regulars in the main Sherman Business Residential District. The petition reads as follows. Petition, City of Evanston, Illinois. We, the undersigned, petition the City of Evanston to enforce City of Evanston Municipal Code 59520 and require that Revolution X owner, Jason Bressler, or Cass Management, take immediate measures to soundproof Revolution X to prevent the emission of noise from Revolution X that annoys, disturbs, and endangers the health of residents and deprives residents of peace and quiet. Evanston Municipal Code 9520 states, "It shall be unlawful for any person within the city to make, continue, or cause to be made, or continued, any loud, unnecessary, or unusual noise which either annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, convenience, health, peace, or safety of others within the city, within the limits of the city." And I have three pages of signatures. I suggest to the council, you can't ignore this petition. There has to be a revolution, a resolution to the RevX problem. The neighbors have endured long enough. The RevX nuisance is not going to go away until Bressler's business is either soundproofed or shut down. Three years of torture by noise bombardment is unforgivable. So, please talk this over as a council and come up with a solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Peggy Tarr, officially Margaret Tarr, and I live at 907 Sherman Avenue. And I just wanted to add a couple of things to what Ms. Moser just said. The night that the petition was presented, it was actually given to the mayor, who then gave it to the city manager. And I want to clarify that evidently, according to Ms. Rosier, the city clerk was blamed for losing the petition, but it's my understanding that he wasn't given the petition. So, I just wanted to make that clear. I obviously made a copy of the petition before it was submitted and I want to give credit to the late Alderman Jack Korsak, who always advised me to do so. As you probably gathered, the noise from Revolution X continues. Evanston police officers arbitrarily respond to complaints about Revolution X noise and complainants continue to be told that Revolution X is not committing a crime or breaking the law. Now, it's recently, well, this morning, a police officer came out, but even on the evening of January 19th, our fourth ward, Alderman Don Wilson, came out in response to complaints about the noise and he could witness the noise coming from Revolution X. According to the Evanston ordinance, the police can ticket someone for noise disturbances on the street, no matter what the time of day or night. No decibel readings are required. Somehow, it seems the city has decided that this ordinance does not apply to Revolution X, and I'm saying specifically when they open the doors, which they still do periodically, and let the sound come out onto the street. And this is not a note that I have on here, but I want to say that there is a movement to remove mentally disabled people from mental facilities such as Albany Care and house them in apartments. And in the complex in which I am living, there have been several mentally disabled people placed there. It's unfair that some of the mentally disabled people are so distressed by the noise that's coming from Revolution Spin that it defeats the whole purpose of putting a mentally disabled person out into an apartment and making them have this kind of stress. I didn't bring my recorder tonight, but the noise that comes from Revolution Spin is actually in the form of shouts, like drill teams. So, there's a steady kind of noise that comes into the apartments even with the windows closed. It's unfair. It's unfair. It doesn't make sense for, and I'm probably on the borderline of mental illness, but it's not fair for any of us, but particularly for the mentally disabled to have to do, to have to deal with this. Now, we have asked and asked, and the only reason, I'm not going to say anything negative about Alderman Wilson because he told me he is working on this with the owner of the building in which Revolution X is housed, but it makes no sense. It doesn't look good for Evanston either. You know, we have a neighborhood that has a concentration as far as where mentally disabled people are housed in Evanston because we have the Albany Care facility, which houses at least 300 to 400 people. So, I am asking you, because we keep saying we don't want to go to court because of the expense, but more than that, it makes no sense. Three years, we have been coming out here and complaining about this. Three years.
Thank you. The last speaker is Mark Cassidy.
Mark Cassidy, Parks and Recreation Board member. I'm here with several of my colleagues tonight to gain a better understanding of the issues around the Penny Park project. But I also wanted to let the council and the community know that the Parks and Recreation Board is there. We meet monthly, the third Thursday of every month except August, and we're a perfect entry point for issues like this around the project. So, I'd encourage everyone to come to our meetings and if they need to contact anyone, Jill McCray or Bob Dornaker or Dan Stein. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment. Next is a special order of business, Penny Park.
Pam, Mayor, members of the council, you have before you in your packet on page eight, a memorandum for myself, Deputy City Manager McCray, and Public Works Director Suzette Robinson, which raises several issues of concern that staff has regarding the project that has been undertaken at Penny Park. I won't read through the entire report, but I do want to focus on the issues that have been raised through the community meetings, and there's a timeline at the top of page nine. Issues regarding the existing playground equipment, issues regarding ADA compliance, visibility issues, materials for rebuild, addition of restrooms, addition of a pavilion, the budget and fundraising issues, and timeframe issues. It's clear to me, Madam Mayor, members of the council, that there seems to be a disconnect between the work that we're doing with this park and some community desires, perhaps to go in a different direction. So, I brought this to you this evening to get direction. Our proposal from the staff is to ask the council to consider the need for the full reconstruction or perhaps to look at partial improvements, to review the costs associated with new construction, is currently identified by letters and associates, and the cost of modifications for the existing park structures. We're also concerned specifically regarding the identified restroom facility and pavilion. Past councils have indicated not a willingness to move forward with restroom facilities, so if that's going to occur here, that would be a change in direction. And then finally, a role of a citizen steering committee to assist with the continued renovation project or assist with identifying modifications to the existing park. Mr. McCray is here, I'm here, Mr. Dornaker, we'd be happy to answer any questions, but really, we're here to get a direction from the council moving forward.
Thank you. And I have had an opportunity to talk to quite a large number of people in the community. I attended one of the meetings. And it seems to me that perhaps the fundamental breakdown is the idea that the starting point is tearing the park down. So, that seems to be where we, you know, I'll say, went astray. So, personally, I never really viewed that as the starting point. I, you know, we voted on an amount to be allocated to Penny Park, we approved a consultant, but it's really kind of, appears to have taken a path where it's tear it down and do something different and try to convince people that it's going to be better. And that's not really my intention and I don't know that that's the council's intention. So, I'm supportive of the idea of looking at it from a broader perspective. You know, are we going to do some sort of restoration, some sort of hybrid thing, add some components, whatever it might be? But I think that the community is the most important part. My kids are now too big to play on it, so I got their input, some of the same distress comments that other people have commented on as well. You know, the high school kids saying, "What? You tear down Penny Park?" My 10-year-old saying, "Just do something about the splinters." So, you've got a number of things that are kind of out there as far as what people want, but I think that the city, the staff, and the council is committed to making sure that we have a community process. This was a community park and that's my intention, is to keep it conceptually the way it is. I like wooden parks, but I want what we have to last. So, whatever that takes, that's what I want to do. I want people to be happy with it. This should be something that people are thrilled about. And it's unfortunate and it's sad that people are distressed about it. I was pleased to be able to put money toward it, but I want to put money towards something that makes everyone happy. And hopefully, we'll get over these hurdles, get back on track, and get something done that everybody is thrilled to have and thrilled to participate in.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem.
Thank you. I, my opinion is that the, the discussion of this park or any park should have originated in Parks and Recreation to start with. And I would like to see this going back to Parks and Recreation. I think they are great stewards of our parks and are very active users of the parks, have had a lot of experience, many members have been on there many years on the board of Parks and Rec. And I think they're very capable of doing this and working within the gathered and known information we have at this point and coming up with a solution then to recommend to council. I think that's the appropriate thing to do and I would be.
Is there a motion?
I would make a motion to that extent.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman, when did you want to speak to the motion?
Yes, I'd like to speak to the motion and also to some of the comments that have been made. Like everyone up
Like everyone up here in the room, my children have played at Penny Mark Park. The first time I had heard from my son, who's a college student, in maybe a week or two was when he sent me an email and said, "What do you mean Penny Park is going to be demolished?" And I had to write back to him and say, "Hello, how are you? No, we'll work on that." So I think that listening to the people who were here and part of this and hearing about all of the other people who still are so active and very involved with the park, you all are this enormous resource that the community built the park originally. You're still there, and I think we need to tap into that. As we do in many other parks, or all of the parks I've dealt with that have been renovated in my ward, is we talk to the community first. And we find out, how does the community like the park? How do you use it? And I think that's the fundamental starting point. And back when this was built, we didn't make parks ADA accessible. That's obviously something we want to do now. So what are the ways that that, as you said, can be done here? But as many of you said, it's historic, it's iconic, it's unlike any other park that we have up and down the North Shore. And we don't want to lose that. We really don't. And so I agree with Alderman Tendem's motion on this. We really need to have the community talking to us and our Parks Department about what they want to see at this location.
Thank you, Alderman Burris. Well, I'm sorry about my voice. Alderman Burris.
I was actually going to make the motion that Alderman Tendem made. But I want to commend Alderman Braithwaite on taking the initiatives, seeing that there were issues at Penny Park. So many people obviously love this park. And I think the intent was to improve and do things in a better way. So it may have not turned out how you thought about it, Alderman Braithwaite, but I think the intention and the goodwill was appropriate. So I commend you for doing that. I do believe we should utilize our Park and Rec Board. And when we're talking about parks and having things in the queue and looking at the overall for the city, we need to utilize them, need to utilize your expertise. It's another committee to go through and vet and hear from the community members. So I would like to see it go back to them. I spoke with the chair today, Dan Stein. He's definitely excited to have it come to that committee. And I spoke with three of the committee members before the meeting and encouraged them to come and let us know that they are here. And they've been watching and want to be a part of this. So hopefully, we can make that happen.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And firstly, say thank you very much for the residents came out. Where's that cute little girl? Good lord, she's awesome. And so the comments that we've heard this evening are very consistent with what we've heard all along. And we've been talking about this for the past year and a half. So everything that you've heard is absolutely true. And I've heard that, and we've heard that as well as the folks from Leathers. So I think something that's important to share with those of you that are here is we could have gone through the normal Parks project and just have someone designed it. And instead, to Mr. Reader's point, we went back to the original group that did it in the first place. And so I would share with members of council, members of the public that are here, that, you know, this is all part of the course. And in speaking to others, Mr. Reader, since I did grow up in the neighborhood right across from the street, and I walk my dog and all the things, there is that excitement. And so here are the things that are consistent that I don't want folks to miss. There was discussion about, Mr. Reader, I think you started off with by sharing the history. I've heard comments about neighbors being involved, the special, unique place that it is, and a discussion of whether or not the park needs to be modified. And someone even said, "I see the potential," meaning what happens when a community comes together. And I think by going through the Leathers process, we will accomplish that. I like the idea of going to the Parks and Recs Board. I will support that. I don't see any issue with that. But one of the things that I just want to communicate to members of council, and I really wish that folks would have taken the time to read this guide, because we're in the pre-design phase. And I think part of the confusion, Alderman Wilson, is that somewhere someone saw final design, and as I discussed with Alderman Wynn, when they saw final design, that was like a bomb went off in the room. And we're nowhere near there. We are in the, if you read this, and I will try to share it with his men, we are not even through the pre-design phase. There is still, and I think your numbers are correct, an opportunity for over 2,000-plus people to somehow get involved and collectively take the ideas of the community to figure out the best approach to go about it. And it's unfortunate that through some miscommunication, and I'll even say some scare tactics, that Alderman Wilson, you're right. The first notion is that we're going to tear this thing down, and somehow we've sort of started at the wrong point. So here's what I would share. I look forward to picking up wherever the conversation goes with the Rec Board. I think that the Leathers model is still a good approach. They build over 3,000 custom parks. I think that however, that whatever it looks like moving forward will definitely depend on the community participation. And just for example, just to educate folks, so when we say steering committee, I will end by this. And the number of committees in the areas that people will have an opportunity to get involved, as a reminder, Mr. Reader, is fundraising, PR. In order to do this at whatever level, we will need volunteers. There was a children's committee 20-some-odd years ago. There's a childcare committee. There's a materials committee. There was a foods committee. There was a tools committee. There was a coordinator of design and special features, and there's now a newly created special needs committee. So I think is this, this is what I, I mean, Alderman Burris, this is what we've been talking about the whole time. You just have to kind of give the process time to work through and not be afraid to commit. And my biggest concern is, you know, similar to someone who once mentioned Harley Clark, is if we're not careful and if we don't listen to each other, we may have another situation where we get nothing. And so I will definitely support sending this to the Parks and Recs Board. They are a part of it. You're already playing a vital role. I spoke to Mr. McCray a year and a half ago, and I can't remember the name of what the particular foundation, but you're going to allow us to do this and save the city money because we will be able, through the Parks and Recs Board, take donations and seek donations. And so we've already started that process. And we already identified a couple of people that want to really get involved. And so we have a long way to go. I have no idea if we'll be able to adjust and get back on the timeline. But we've already have seven meetings, and we're committing to have more. And I think the key thing that people should realize is, once we get to something that we can at least agree on, then from there is when the community involvement piece really starts to take place in form. So thank you very much, Alderman Tendem, for making the motion, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to address the suggestion by one of the speakers that we are being premature in addressing the play structure at Penny Park. And my response is that, I think one of the speakers actually did say it's a good time to address the rebuilding of the equipment. And part of it is, you know, it's been on our capital plan for a number of years. And we don't, as good stewards or managers of city assets, we don't milk every useful, every year of useful life out of our equipment. Rather, we try to very proactively anticipate when their useful life is coming to an end. And that makes sense, not only because it saves us maintenance costs, but manages the risk, the inherent risk in playground equipment. So I think it's just prudent management that we are right now, before we see major failure in the equipment, that we are anticipating, we're starting to see around the edges that it's old equipment, and it does need renovation, improvement. And I have every confidence that the redesign of Penny Park will lead to, will produce an improved Penny Park that everyone will enjoy, the design that will give us an iconic park and playground, one that speaks to its history and is for everybody. And perhaps, Alderman Braithwaite, we just haven't found yet that unique design that serves as many as possible and that also respects the history of the place and becomes still this iconic, Alderman Wynn, park that everyone loves. And I do have a vested interest in this with children who still go to Penny Park. I'm sorry, no, they're my nieces. They're not my children. But I've been there in the very recent history. And just a couple months ago, before there was snow on the ground with my nieces, and they love it as well, so.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
I just have a question. Alderman Braithwaite, you mentioned Leathers, and I think one of the speakers also did, in terms of, so the original Leathers who helped design the park in the beginning, it's not the same Leathers that it is now. Is that not correct? Or is that's what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that's not correct. The, so 24 years ago, Mr. Reader, Leathers and Associates was the first organization. And so what's interesting is that the same organization, so they started this across, you know, what is it? 3,000 parks, 50 states, seven countries. Here they are, and they're calling their new parks Generation Two. So a majority of their parks that they, the wooden structures that they built 20-plus years ago, they're now going through each community and going through the exact same process. So the group that's there is the original group. And in fact, it's Mark Leathers, who is the son of the founder, that's still with the organization. I don't want to go too much into the other group that I've heard a little bit about. They're, it's, anyway, I don't want to do that, but I can tell you that...
Well, they're both called Leathers. I just, I'm getting confused.
Right, so Leathers and Associates, if you go to the website, and I can send you, is the original group that actually...
Yeah, I saw that.
Right, right, right. But there was one thing that was brought up that I think it's important to note in terms of the bathroom and the pavilion. And so I would share that there has been no decision made on the bathroom or the pavilion. This is something that I've heard specifically from a few neighbors that live within close proximity of the park. And so if there's a bathroom or pavilion to be designed or part of it, I mean, we'll flush that through the parks. Oh, God, that's going to be the quote of the day, isn't it? We'll flush it through the, okay, go ahead, guys. Go ahead, have fun with it. I know. So we'll vet it through the parks and Recs. Sport. And, but the point I want to make is, it isn't committing city dollars. I want to say that. And I'm not taking a hard position either way. But what I do like, and I think this is where, you know, clear direction from council, so at least when we get to the Parks and Recs Board, we understand where we are, is that it is a process to allow communities who would like to do it. And so I do think...
But this is a part of their proposal? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 no. It's just part of the process. So I think with something that I discussed specifically with Alderman Wilson is that whoever mentioned it, whether it was, you know, while whoever is it, if it comes out of the design process, and I don't know, I'm not making any predetermined, that it's something that will be paid for outside of the city's budget. And it would have the monies to, in order to construct it, would have to be raised by the community. So I just wanted to say that, so there's no confusion. And I hope I didn't make it any more confusing by stating that.
Well, you didn't make it any more confusing, but it's a little complicated because I think that would have an effect on all parks across the city. So I, that would be, that would be a concern of mine in terms of that. Because if we're going to get into that aspect of fundraising, because every park would love to have a bathroom for sure. But, you know, it becomes, I just, I would have some, you know, some issues with that personally, in terms of that, in terms of the effects that would have on my three parks that would certainly love to have bathrooms. So, but anyway, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother discussion. I thought you were saying that was a part of the presentation.
No, no, I think it's an opportunity, Alderman Holmes, to look at all the aspects. Like, I'm not sure, once we go to the Parks and Recs Board, how many times we want to come back and forth to council. I think the, what I'm hearing is multiple things. So if we just want to refer to Parks and Recs and then stop there, I'm okay with that.
And I, but I still get confused because I don't know where that's coming from. Is that, you're saying that's coming from the Leathers people who are making this recommendation? Or where's that coming from?
No. I'm saying that's coming from, I hear this from neighbors who live around the park. We realize that Penny Park is a high utilization park. And we also realize that there are no public facilities within walking distance from the park. And so unfortunately, some of the things that I've heard from our residents and from people that their kids, young K through five, that on occasion have to use the bathroom. And so neighbors' homes, in essence, become the public restroom facilities. So one of the things that I've heard, along with every other concern out there, is that if we're going to at some point renovate, to consider using, consider adding a bathroom.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes, are you...
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Alderman Fisk, and I'd remind you all, we still have a full council meeting coming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify. My hearing of this was that the Leathers group was the original designer of the park. And the folks that were involved in the original design are now with the other organization, which is, I think, Play by Design. Is that correct?
I thought, that's what I thought I heard.
Yeah. I think this is, it's just getting incredibly confusing.
It is.
So I look forward to it being unconfused at committee.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Wynn.
I believe that's correct. But I also wanted to ask Alderman Tendem, was your reference, excuse me, your motion to send this to the Parks and Rec Department or the board?
The board.
Board, okay.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
And I just want to, I guess, get some clarification because I think I heard different Aldermen say different things that are slightly different, but significant based on what I heard from the comments. So the question, I'd like to be clear, is, are we sending this back to the Parks and Rec Board for review of the process? Because that's what I'm hearing, the people who stepped up and are talking about it. So is this going to be a review of the process itself? Or are we sending it back to them to work with Leathers to come up with, you know, picking the stuff out of the catalog? Because I think I kind of heard different things. My impression was that Alderman Tendem was suggesting that we send it back to them for looking at the entire process.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
With a, with an overview of this being the direction, what should we do about Penny Park? Could that be their objective? To come up with the answer to that question? Or at least to bring it back here? And just as a reminder, since this is not a standing committee, we'll have to take a vote on whether or not to send it.
We are about to vote, except I would like to say one thing about Penny Park. When I took my granddaughter, who is now 15, which was about two years old, to play at Penny Park, I had to drive her because it's not in our neighborhood. And she got out of the car and looked at the park and applauded. So I absolutely have to be part of a Penny Park rehab and be sure that it is done so that children will still applaud when they first see it. City clerk, we need to vote, well...
Madam Mayor, I appreciate a restatement so that we're, so that staff is clear what you're asking. I think what I've heard is that it's to go back to the Parks and Rec Board to answer the question, what to do with Penny Park. So that puts all options on the table. Keep Leathers, don't keep Leathers, do it ourselves, don't do anything, whatever that would be, that it's going back for, really a blank slate, back to the Parks and Rec Board. Is that the motion?
That's the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Could we have the consent agenda, please, Alderman Rainey?
We're moving along?
We are now.
Oh, thank you.
We're clearing the mess on this side of the council.
If you guys would get your act.
I'm fine.
I'm going to go to the next question. Oh, okay. Run out of some cold water.
Thank you, Jonathan.
We're losing our bar.
Alderman Rainey, the consent agenda, please.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, the consent agenda is as follows. Ask for the approval of the minutes of the council meeting of January 12. The Administration and Public Works Committee met this evening and request your approval of the payroll through January 11 in the amount of $2,853,768.41. The committee recommends approval of 2014 bills through January 27, 2015, $1,150,586.73. The 2015 bills through the same date, January 27, $252,606.25. We ask your approval of the sole source renewal of annual Acela PAL maintenance and support agreement for year nine of the city tenure contract in the amount of $128,362.82. This will run through March 14, 2016. We ask your approval to authorize the manager to renew the annual sole source service agreement with Motorola Solutions in the amount of $77,092.92 through December 31, 2015. This is from the emergency telephone system budget. Approval is requested of sole source renewal of elevator, of Otis Elevator Maintenance Contract for the elevators at the Service Center, the Civic Center, Maple Avenue, and Church Street Parking Garages for a one-year term at a cost of $64,208.76. This goes through December 31, 2015. A decrease from last year's fees of approximately 7% is being offered. We ask your approval of solid waste agency of Northern Cook County Swank's disposal fees for 2015 in a not-to-exceed amount of $60,000 for capital, $800,000 for operation and maintenance, and $20,000 for recycling transfer fees. We ask your approval for the manager to renew the service provider agreement with presence behavioral help for the provision of 24-hour crisis line access, mental health crisis intervention, and various community outreach and education services at a cost of $73,333.33 through December 15, 2015. Request is made of you to approve a change order number two for, a no-charge change order number two for a 48-inch diameter water intake improvement with Lake Erie Diving Inc. to extend the contract duration for 110 days from April 12 to July 31, 2015. Staff recommends that the town of Evanston 2013 audited annual financial report and the 2014 January through April audited financial report be accepted and placed into the file. And this will be the last time you'll hear a recommendation like this. Staff recommends also that the council adopt Resolution 6R15 authorizing that payments related to the 2015 CIP project expenditures up to $14,320,650 be reimbursed by subsequent 2015 GEO bond issuance. Resolution 7R15 will modify the loan terms for Chicago's home of Chicken and Waffles located at 2424 Dempster Street. And to clarify, I don't think this needs to be pulled off, but the recommendation is to accept the staff's recommendation. Next is Ordinance 149014, authorizing the manager to execute Amendment Two, the amended and restated water supply contract between the Northwest Water Commission and the City of Evanston. This will allow Evanston to feed two chemicals directly into the commission's pipeline. Ordinance 10015 is for introduction and is amending the city code, Chapter Five Plumbing Code, to adopt the Illinois Plumbing Code without modification. Ordinance 2015 authorizes the manager to enter into a real estate contract for the sale of city-owned real property at 62931 Howard Street to Ward Eight LLC. A two-thirds majority of city council is required to adopt this ordinance. Next is an ordinance affecting only distilleries. The local liquor commissioner recommends city council adopt Ordinance 14015, which amends city code of 2012 as amended to permit the retail sale of alcohol for on-site consumption by persons of at least 21 years of age. The next item regarding transportation network providers is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Ordinance 124014 is for action and amends Title Ten Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter Six Traffic Schedules, Section Two B, authority to remove vehicles obstructing a fire hydrant and providing 48-hour notice when temporary tow signs are posted. We ask your approval also of Ordinance 7015 Residential Exemption Parking District B to include two-hour parking limits between 9:00 and 9:00 on Church Street and Hinman Avenue. Planning Development Committee met this evening also and recommend adoption of ordinance, this is for introduction however, adoption of Ordinance 13015 granting zoning relief to establish one, this is off the consent agenda, correct?
It stands kind of.
Okay, okay. This is just for introduction. Granting zoning relief to establish one open parking space in front of 521 Ridge Avenue. Staff recommends that if city council chooses to approve zoning relief, a condition be imposed for the removal of the extraneous curb cut and driveway apron on Elmwood Avenue. Next is P2 for introduction, Ordinance 12015 granting a special use for a type-two restaurant, Cluckers Charcoal Chicken, at 1936 Maple Avenue. The next item, hotel motel tax, has been held in committee and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next item is Ordinance 3015 for action, grants a special use for a type-two restaurant, Jimmy John's Gourmet Sandwiches, at 1241 Chicago Avenue. Madam Mayor has made the following recommendations for appointments to the Harley-Clark Citizens Committee, Gary Schumacher, Amina DiMarco, Linda Damaschek, Steve Hagerty, Don Zeineman, and for Commission on Aging, Susan Morse and David Suter, the Lad Our Buridum Committee, Wendy Pollak and Charles Smith, and to the Public Safety Commission, Mary Erickson. Madam Mayor, with that, I move the consent agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. The consent agenda has been moved and seconded. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the consent agenda passes.
Alderman Holmes, could you walk us through Administration and Public Works?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor, we have no report.
A two, A 12.
Nice try, Alderman.
A 12.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. I thought I was keeping up, I'm sorry. Begging your pardon, we do have one. A 12, Ordinance 109-0-14, adding Title Three, Chapter 31, regarding transportation network providers. City staff submits Ordinance 109-0-14 for the city council's consideration. City staff was directed to draft an ordinance to regulate transportation network providers such as Uber, Sidecar, and Lyft. This ordinance was held at the Administration and Public Works on January 12, 2015. Tonight, we were discussing, the city manager brought to us that, on the same night that we had this discussion on the 12th, I guess, the governor had also signed some kind of regulations for the state. And I think it was the will of the committee to suggest that we develop an ordinance saying that we would wait for the state regulations to have any kind of regulations for the City of Evanston. So I would move that the staff would develop an ordinance to that effect.
It was a resolution.
Resolution.
A resolution to that effect, I'm sorry, yes. Not an ordinance, but a resolution.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Oh, is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you, and I would be interested in seeing that resolution, but one thing that I remain puzzled by is that there seems to be this sense that there's a difference between a transportation network provider and a taxi cab. And, you know, I understand that people have made comments, things along the lines of, you know, the cars are nicer, whatever it might be, but the fact of the matter is, for something that we're calling a taxi, for example, the going rate for a medallion in Chicago is over 200, almost $300,000. So if you want to have a taxi business of your own in Chicago, you have to make a capital investment of hundreds of thousands of dollars. And for these transportation networks, there's nothing. And the reason why it costs that much is because there's regulations in place that force the people to incur that cost. So I'm baffled as to why we would just let this other business completely off the hook and we would have these extraordinary limitations on something else that's doing the exact same thing. Maybe somebody has something that can give me some clarity.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, I think you've bought into something that probably is not the case. No one will ever be able to explain why a taxi medallion is worth 200,000 unless, of course, those who are buying the taxi medallion are making more than that. So it's, it is very different, and you point out the main reason why it's different, and that is that it's not controlled in the same way as taxis are controlled. Furthermore, it is because of that medallion charge that one day there will be no such operation as you call the taxi business, because the model that's being presented by the network providers will be the one that's in the forefront. Anyway, this is, this we literally had within our committee, Alderman Holmes, agreed to the list of items that Grant Farrar and the legal department placed before us in terms of how to proceed. There were several different options that we chose.
Yeah, is your mic on?
Your mic, nobody can hear you.
That we chose the third option that the legal department presented. We didn't really suggest that it go back to committee, did we?
I didn't say go back to committee.
Just do a resolution.
Okay.
No, we can do the resolution.
Okay, but not use what's in here tonight, okay. It's going to come back to us, is what you're saying, all right.
Absolutely, I think that was, that was my understanding is that.
That's our recommendation.
Is that the recommendation, right?
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
I think Alderman Wilson at committee, I can't speak for the committee, but for myself, and I think maybe there was a sense at committee that the state regulation that passed on the same evening that we were considering it, two weeks ago the last time, met all of our criteria for ensuring consumer protection and public safety as to the individual drivers of the rideshare, the transportation network, which were our primary concerns. And that we were content to be patient with seeing how the state regulation plays out and what it does to competition between taxi drivers and the rideshare providers. And I share your concern about there being a level playing field, and at some point, maybe sooner rather than later, we need to revisit how we regulate taxi cabs and make sure that, you know, whatever, however they're being regulated, that it's kind of the same guarantees of public safety and consumer protection without being over regulatory. Makes me wonder, to what extent does the existence of the regulations in Chicago and the requirement for medallions, how much does that distort competition and distort the market for transportation services like that?
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Thanks. And, I mean, it's economics, you know, the idea between, behind the licensing and the medallions is to limit the number of drivers. And so there's a decision that's been made to limit the number of drivers. And so I can't imagine how anybody who's supporting the idea of not regulating the other networks could sit and look a taxi driver in the eye and say, you know, this is good, this is competition. It's not competition. It's, frankly, it's kind of absurd to have one group heavily regulated with extraordinary costs and to tell the other group, hey, you know what, you're not going to have any of these costs, you just go ahead and you compete with these guys and we'll see how it plays out. You know how it's going to play out, the other group's going to be completely decimated. It was a good article in the New York Times a few weeks ago, kind of covering some of these issues, and I think that would be an interesting reading point, but I think it's great for our Corporation Council to come back to us with whatever the resolution is, and I'm interested in seeing that. So I presume we'll pick up the conversation then.
Alderman Grover, did you have?
Yeah, just, you know, I don't think that we regulate the number of taxi cabs operating in Evanston or the number of companies. As I recall, we kind of rejected going down that road a couple of years ago. Five years of doing this, and I may, my memory may be faulty, but I think that we decided not to limit the number of companies that could do business in Evanston, taxi cab companies, and I don't think that we regulate the number of cabs. So we are different from Chicago in that aspect.
All right, seeing no more lights, I think we're ready to vote on the recommendation to send the ordinance back to staff. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
That does complete your report.
Let's complete our, yes.
Alderman Fisk, could you do planning and development for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. P3, Ordinance 152014, amending the hotel motel tax to add bed and breakfast establishments, is being held in committee for some more information from staff.
Ah, thank you. And that brings us to call of the wards. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, thank you to my colleague, Mr. Alderman Tendem, for a really lovely meeting last Thursday. We had a great turnout at Three Crowns Park. Thank you to our hosts and a great discussion and introduction of the proposed new Whole Foods Green Bay Road Store. So Alderman Braithwaite, I think 2015 is all good for new grocery stores opening up in Evanston. We will finally, what, two years later, be filling those Dominic spaces, and it all bodes well for both employment and sales. And second, don't miss the State of the Schools event this Thursday, 29th of January, 7:00 at ETHS. Our two superintendents from the high school, Eric Witherspoon from District 65, it's Paul Goran, who will be addressing all concerns and questions about the state of our schools first time ever. Michael's Cafeteria will be open at 6:00 PM, before that for a kind of a mix and mingle before the 7:00 agenda begins.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
I'll share with Alderman Burrus a reminder about the Eighth and Ninth Ward Meeting, which will be on February 5 at Little Beans Cafe at Asbury and Oakton. And I want to reach out to the League of Women Voters to attend that meeting with voter registration material, because I believe we're going to have a lot of people that are not registered, including me. I moved. And I have.
Registered, just on the wrong address.
Several, several people have asked about registration lately, and I think it will be a good opportunity, even if four or five people register, so please come.
When you send the notice around, just remind people.
Well, I'm, I'm going to do that, yes, I'm going to do that. That's about all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Burrus.
Thank you, yes. Look forward to seeing everyone at the joint ward meeting. It's the first time that many people will be able to get in to see Little Beans, it'll be very exciting. And I extend an invitation to this front row here, so please come. There'll be, take pictures, it'll be really colorful with kids, so please come to the press. Also, I want to remind, you know, we're talking a lot about the school district elections, the Ridgeville Park District Commissioners, they're also up on the ballot this time. The Ridgeville Park District Commissioners, they're also up on the ballot this time around, so please take a look at those in the Ninth Ward Newsletter for March. We'll be talking about the commissioners that are up for election, so please take a look at that. Thanks.
Wait, wait. Valley Produce will be at our meeting.
Oh, and Valley Produce will also be at the joint Eighth and Ninth Ward Meeting. So please come out.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to send out best wishes to our beloved Ricky Voss on a speedy recovery and also to Marty Lyons, one of the walking wounded.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to remind residents of the Second Ward that this, excuse me, next month, February 12 at 7:00 PM at District 65, will host our first meeting for the year. I look forward to residents coming out. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wen. Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
I just want to say that after our last meeting on, I think it was the 12th, on the 15th, I believe it was, at Chicken and Waffles, I had the occasion to be there with the Jackie Robinson West Little League National Champions. And I, it was such a wonderful event.
Were you there by yourself, Alderman Holmes?
I, no, I wasn't. Well, you didn't say anything, Alderman Braithwaite, so I'm just saying I was really thrilled. I actually, I actually said, and I think I said this to Bob, I was more excited than the kids. I, it was just such a wonderful, wonderful event. And the kids were so, they're just absolutely unbelievable. They are so humble, they're so quiet, they're so manly. They're everything that you could just think about, little boys ought to be. And it was such a wonderful, wonderful evening. And I'm sorry that people, more people didn't know, so they could have brought out more kids. But the kids that were there, our Evanston kids, really enjoyed it. And Alderman Braithwaite, I know, had gotten out as much of the message as we possibly could to try to get people there. But it was a wonderful event, and I'm sorry that you guys missed it, because it was, it was just great. So.
Thank you, Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I wanted just to thank Seventh Ward Alderman Grover for partnering at that meeting. It was very successful, a great crowd. And thanks to the staff and other folks that came out and helped us with that meeting, especially our, our police officers, Coy, Sungenberger, and Pickett.
Thank you very much. That concludes citizen comment. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
950. 950.